Call the school committee to order. Mr. Horgan, would you lead us in a pledge of allegiance, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
School committee chair report. I have nothing to report at this time. Resource committee?
Resource committee, we met Friday afternoon. We approved our minutes from March 29th. We discussed our grant donations, one of them which was a power option grant for 10,000, and a unitill grant for 5,500 for the, it will be used for the steam traps at Long Joe School. Mr. Jokel talked about our E-rate relief, 21st Century Grant, McKinney-Vento Grant, nutrition service grant that we will have for the summer. The resource committee approved all of those. We discussed school choice requests for Long Joe Steam Trap of 15,132. We had an enrollment update. We talked about the budget, and that was, and we did discuss a little bit about building needs, which we were given a Crocker update, and the Long Joe School Library and Roof Update.
Any questions from the committee? Seeing none, moving on. Policy committee, Ms. Cragan.
We are, we'll talk after the meeting tonight and schedule our next meeting so that we can pick up where we left off. We're going over one of the chapters, and Pam Rivers has requested we have a meeting as well. So, don't leave right away. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the committee? Seeing none, student support committee, Ms. Labelle Pierce.
We met Thursday, May 3rd. We talked about the, all kind of the structured learning days or lizard bags, and what, you know, how to proceed on that going forward. We got feedback from Mr. Shalafu at Long Joe, the one group, one of the groups that's actually done this, and the superintendent's recommendation was that there'd be meeting, there'd be a meeting this summer to just try to get everybody on the same page about the process. Obviously, this would be in the most extreme of extenuating circumstances, and wouldn't take the place of any of the five days we build in for snow days, but it, unique experiences like missing a day for some extenuating circumstance that any other school isn't experiencing, it's a good, it's a good process. So, just need to kind of work it out, and if it's on tap and kind of ready to go when we have a day like that, it'll be a better experience. And then, Mr. Shalafu talked about the extended day model at Long Joe, and really gave us more insight into the grant and how it works. They're just, they're, you know, going forward, there are definitely a lot of questions about the lifespan of the extended day program, and, you know, that's really kind of something that the staff is even talking about at this point. And then, we got a report about food allergies in the schools. There was concern as we talk about the steak moving to breakfast in the classroom, what happens for students who have severe allergies and are exposed to milk products and things like that, and, and so, Ms. Rivers gave us really great rundown of, really, the incidences at the schools, and, and kind of where they happen, and how they happen, and the kind of training that staff go through to make sure that that is mitigated. So, there may be, you know, more things that ultimately we bring forward through on the policy committee, but it was good update. Thanks.
Thank you. Any questions from the committee? Seeing none. School personnel, I'm happy to report that we continue with negotiations with the teachers' association. They're going, they're going, actually going, I think, well, and we had a meeting today. I want to thank the people that participate on that committee, both Fitchburg Public School teachers, as well as the administration, and school committee members as well. Thank you for your, your efforts, because there is a great deal of effort that goes into it, and a lot of, a lot of information. Any questions? Executive committee, there is no need for the executive committee, nor is their report. And, without further ado, the student report.
All right, so today started the advanced placement tests at Fitchburg State University, and that'll be going on until Friday of next week, May 18th. So, there are morning or afternoon sessions. The Spring Concert is Thursday, May 10th, 7:00 PM in the auditorium. Just like last year, the event is free and open to the entire community. There's going to be an early release day on Wednesday, May 16th, and just like regular dismissal, 11:58 AM. The FHS relay races will be Thursday, May 17th, and like usual, I think, 6:00 PM, Crockerfield. And the Spring Fling at the Fitchburg Art Museum is Saturday, May 19th, and it's a community event at the Fitchburg Art Museum. Not sure exactly what's going to take place, but it's, it's probably going to be more like displays and...
It's May 19th?
Yeah. Saturday, May 19th.
Excuse me, Matthew, what, what time was the Spring Concert? Do you know?
Um, yeah, 7:00.
Seven, okay, thank you, okay.
In the auditorium.
Okay. Thank you.
Um...
Read it.
Um...
Or you want me to say it?
I, you know, I can't, I'm not going to read the whole thing. So, recently, I guess I'll just talk, recently Lisa and I attended the regional student advisory council in Hudson, at Hudson High School, and we didn't really know what to expect, but it's basically where students kind of come together, they congregate, and they talk about educational policy and student rights. And essentially, people just, the students from all over, all over the region come together from different high schools, and they talk about issues in their schools, and then we all come together to write like three-minute speeches, right? And then, we try, we run for positions, so there's chair, there's regional communications director, there's state delegates and others, and Lisa and I decided to run for a state delegate, and we got elected.
We got it. We got it.
That's great.
Yeah, I'm excited. My, my whole family is very proud. I'm proud of myself.
As we are.
Yeah, it was very nice. I feel like we, both of us fit in very well. Speaking on myself, I made a lot of friends. We made, we actually made so many friends, we all went out to eat after all together, and we traded social media, so it was a very nice experience. I'm very glad I decided to go. The 5K for Little Feet is going to be held on Sunday, May 20th. It's an annual 5K Little Feet Walk. That's held, that's sponsored by like the NHS. The NHS is doing a lot to raise money and get people to walk. The Rotary of Fitchburg Award Dinner will be held Tuesday, May 22nd at 6:00 PM at FHS. FHS Alumni Awards will be held Wednesday, May 23rd at 6:00 PM at the FHS Auditorium. MCAS for Math starts Wednesday, May 23rd, and goes until Thursday, the 24th. All sophomores, some juniors. Senior Award Night will be held Wednesday, May 30th at the FHS Auditorium, and of course, graduation will be held Friday, June 1st at 6:00 PM, hopefully at Crockerfield.
Yep, weather permitting.
Hopefully, if, I swear, if it rains or something happens and it's in the gym again, I'll be very disappointed. But yeah, I think that's all we have for now.
Great, thank you. Questions?
Good question. On the Little Feet Walk and Run?
Yes.
Is, is there a website or where we can preregister? I can't remember. I remember reading about it in the paper, and I forget how you can...
That, you know, that was a question I was going to ask the superintendent. Can we have, can the committee have a doc, you know, that shows every event? There's so much going on in the next month, month and a half. If we had the dates and times, and...
Yeah.
Because then we could take time to put them into iPhones.
It's on the, it's on Jeremy's...
Is it on the, the Twitter high?
Newsletter that he sends out.
Okay.
Oh, sorry.
No.
I was going to say, you can also email Ms. Julie Alexander. She's the one that's like running that. She's an English teacher.
She kind of keeps track of all that stuff?
Yeah, she's the one that's like the coordinator.
I'll, I'll get, I'll get that, especially right now, there's, it's, there's a lot.
Right. One after the other, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
Oh.
Yes.
Oh, sorry. I was going to say, I forgot one thing, prom.
Oh, yeah?
Prom, we can't forget prom.
Where was it?
Where was it? It was at the...
Oh, that's right, you had it already.
Yeah, it was May 5th at the Ski Lodge.
What, she was at mine?
One of the mountain ski lodge.
Really?
Yeah, it was very nice. I had, it was my first prom ever, so I didn't really know what to expect, and it was very nice. I liked it. The food was pretty good. We went on the ski lift. That was really fun. The dancing was fun, too.
Did you want to say something?
I did, because I just thought maybe as a group we could thank Matt for the work that he did at the gala.
Oh, that's right.
And I know the superintendent...
Why you look familiar?
The superintendent...
Surprise, surprise.
I know, I know. I'm kidding.
The superintendent will probably give an update about it, but I, I just wanted to say, there were 13 Fitchburg High School students. They were fantastic.
Yeah.
So wonderful, and I, what I said in an email to your principal verifying all the hours, right, was that you also did the work cheerfully, and that's, that's huge. I mean, you guys were really great. So, thank you very much, ma'am.
That was wonderful.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none. Approval of the minutes of the regular school committee meeting of April 23rd, 2018. I have a motion.
Move to approve the minutes.
Motion made, seconded to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Is unanimous. No need for executive session. Communications?
So, I've got a couple of things, one, one that I realized I needed to let everyone know about. We're having a celebration of reading at Barnes &amp; Noble, Water Tower Plaza, Lemonster, and this is an event for Be Positive Therapy Pets and Community Education. Among our guest readers are Fitchburg Mayor Steve DiNatale, Fitchburg Library Director Sharon Bernard. We will also have Lemonster Mayor Dean Mazzarella and Representative Natalie Higgins, and we'll have a bunch of really fun pets as well. Well, it's in Lemonster. I have, we have to be even Steven about this.
Come on.
So, the celebrity pets will be Fiona, who is the front page of the Sentinel today. She's a Great Dane, and she's in every single, she's in all of the five classrooms we're in in Fitchburg schools. Lowell, who's a Golden Retriever. Bobby, who's a Lab. Luna, who's a Pomeranian, and just to round it out, Mr. Waffles, who is a British Bombay Tonkinese Shelter Cat mix.
Whoa.
So...
What a pedigree.
So, that's Friday, May 18th, 4:00 to 8:00 PM, and I'm, I know that that's the same date as, as your event, but it'll be walk-in, come celebrate reading, come hear a story being read, and really appreciate the mayor and Director Bernard being our guest readers. It'll be very fun.
Date again?
Friday, Friday, May 18th from 4:00 to 8:00 PM. So, we start early, and the mayor, I believe, we have on, I think, I think we have you on at 4:00. Talk to Joan.
Yes.
Yes. So, you get to inaugurate it.
This says 4:30.
Okay, then you're on at 4:30.
Is it 4:30, okay?
Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Got it. Yep. Great. You know, when you, whenever you say Mr. Waffles, it makes me smile.
I'm so glad.
It's such a funny name. I just love it. It's a happy name.
It is, it is a very happy name, and the children at Ryangold were very happy to see him on Monday, and he's, he with Fiona, his buddy, are helping our special education students read for longer and read longer books.
Right.
Yeah.
Mr. Waffles is how old now, did you say?
14 on July 9th.
July 9th. 14. We're going to have to get a cake or something.
At the very least.
Tuna fish cake?
Tuna fish cake.
Big thing of cat?
Yeah, a big catnip.
Proclamation, the city of Fitchburg, let's not stop.
Mr. Waffles, he's wonderful.
That's true. He just attended a meeting in the mayor's office.
That's right. That's right. He didn't move out of the bag, though. He was in that thing, that thing that she carries him in.
Yeah. Yeah. So, our other announcement is, we have, let me hand this down so we can do a picture. So, we did, we're doing something new this year, which is, we had a STEM poetry contest, and we opened it up to the high school, and we have the two winners, Vence Henry and then Michaela Wakefield, who also helped as a weight person at the gala on Saturday night, here to read their poems to us and their short poems, and then the mayor and I will give you guys your prizes. So, if you want to come up to the table, and everyone got your poems, they got, the poems are in the packet, and if you want to introduce yourselves and say a few words about what inspired you, because again, we think of STEM as, you know, hard science, but the idea of writing poetry inspired by this field is a tradition that, you know, goes back to Browning, goes back to Matthew Arnold, and we certainly have contemporary poets as well. So, thank you for joining the pantheon, and why don't we start with Michaela?
Okay, so, when I saw the competition, I knew I had to enter it because I'm a part of the Red Poet Society. Emily Hill's the president at Fitchburg High School, and it was something I was really passionate about, so I got the prompt, and it was three to 12 lines, and I was like, what am I going to write? So, I sat on it, and then at school, all of a sudden, on my way back to class, I was like, oh, I'll write about Henrietta Lacks. I got my first line already, it rhymes. And Mrs. Camol, we read Henrietta, The Immortal Life of Henrietta Lacks, when she taught my ninth grade class, and it's something that really inspired me. So, yeah, this is my poem. It's called Logos, Pathos, and Ethos, and it means logic, emotions, and credibility. Henrietta Lacks was a woman who was black. She was the first person to have immortal selves. They were called HeLa cells. They made a big impact. However, a serious bioethics issue made her family gasp. Her cells were taken without her permission. The doctors at John Hopkins were smitten. Without her cells being taken, scientists' minds would have never been awakened, would we have ever discovered new innovations.
Great. All right, and let's hear from Vence.
So, I guess I just saw these things, the posters for this competition plastered up against the school, and well, it was a poem thing, and I was like, well, it's STEM, I'm interested in the sciences, and I mean, I guess I can write. So, I decided, oh, well, I have nothing better to do, and between the copious amounts of homework, might as well do something fun.
I like it. Editorializing, I love it.
So, so when people think of STEM and the science fields, I feel like people far too often think of the hard numbers, the crunching, the calculations, the incredible mind that it takes, and people feel intimidated by that. So, I wanted to go with something that's a bit lax. Science isn't just about numbers, it's about capturing the human imagination and soul, and taking what we can imagine and making it a reality through our own wit, through our own creativity, through our own cunning, and I wanted to kind of embrace the idea that science is more than just math and numbers, but it's our own adventure, it's our own discovery. So, I decided, well, since the beginning of time, we always look to the sky and let our imaginations go free, so, true to what astronaut means, this poem is called Star Sailors. Towards the sky, we pour our eyes, stars twinkling bright like fireflies. On Noah's Ark, we embark, parting stars, visiting Mars. Cetus swims, Cygnus flies, tempting humanity will soon arrive. So, let's accept the cosmic invitation, placing our minds on a new location.
I should also say that the, the poems were judged by Tara Sweeney, Fitchburg Public School graduate and our first STEM Academy scholar, so she was not able to be here because she's studying for a cross-country flight exam she's having, but she wanted to extend her best wishes, and if you guys come forward, we can present you with your prizes.
Do you want to get a picture with yours?
First, they're going to come over there.
Okay, ready to go?
All right. So, this...
Got it? Yeah.
Okay, where we going?
Right there. They're going to come there. They're going to come to you. So, put it over there, so I can take your photos.
Okay. Really nice work, guys. Thank you, thank you. All right, so how, stand up if the mayor is on that side, and I will give you your prize. So, it is a journal, and, and there's, you got the rhyming dictionary, which is really fun. And then, Michaela got a STEM bag, you both got shirts, and you both have journals. So...
Everyone look here. Everyone look here, Michaela.
No blinking.
Okay, great. Good, good.
Well done. Well done. Really well done. So, this is something for your resume.
Yes, yes, yes.
Great. Thank you.
Friday.
Those are really good, actually. Thank you very much.
Think you could spare me one of those fries? He's smelling your fried fries.
Actually, I didn't get to finish it, though. You can have whatever's left.
Oh, wait a minute. Oh, mayor?
Yes.
Oh, there is actually another item on communications. I'm so sorry, I forgot.
Go ahead.
All right, well, I think we're going to all have to stand up for this, and I'll give you a key.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Andre. Happy birthday to you.
That is out of order. That is not on the agenda. I'm sure Anna will have to, we'll have to talk Anna about that on...
Although Sally did talk about Barnes &amp; Noble, and that wasn't on this agenda either.
Okay, all right, all right. Thank you so much.
You're very welcome. So, here, we have some special gifts.
Yep.
We have, we have flowers, which are not fattening.
Like...
We have a special market basket cupcake.
Cupcake, great.
Yes, and then, because they didn't have lots of cupcakes, I got seeds for everyone in the room.
With everyone.
So, we have little raspberry things and napkins.
Thank you so much. Really appreciate it.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you.
You're still good with McDonald's.
All right. Great, oh, thank you. All right. Okay, well, continuing what we can, continuing with the meeting, and verbality and merit, thank you so much. This is one, this is one birthday I would have been happy to skip. All right, so...
Public comment? Oh, go ahead, Peter.
I just want to make a quick comment. Sally, Ms. Cragan mentioned Tara Sweeney.
Yes.
Tara made her first solo flight this past, at Fitchburg Airport.
She did.
So, she's a pilot, yeah, for a solo.
Excellent. Excellent. So, I'm going to call up Mr. Shea, Tom.
Wait, wait, we, we needed public comment. No, no one...
Okay, sorry.
This is a public comment, five-minute time limit. Anybody in the audience wishing to make a public comment? No. You're not the public. No, I'm kidding. I'm kidding, go ahead.
I don't want to be...
You have to come and sit here.
Yeah, you're going to go to the...
And you have to say, if you're a resident of Fitchburg and where you live.
Speak clearly and loudly into the microphone, Mr. Kuzenza.
Ray Kuzenza, live on 18 Watts Way in Fitchburg, and I'm the athletic director of the high school, and I know I'm not on the agenda, so I'm going to take this opportunity to invite the entire school committee to the relays. It's the centennial celebration, the 100th year of Crockerfield.
Yeah.
We have, we'd love to have you, you can be a guest starter or a trophy handerouter, but we have some of the Crocker family coming back, which we will honor them with a short ceremony before the march. The student starts at 5:30, the speaking is at quarter of 6, and the first race is at 6:00. So, we'd love to have you all attend.
It's rain or shine, correct?
No, we do have a rain date of the 24th.
24.
Okay, the following Thursday.
Thank you.
Is that an official title, a trophy handerouter?
Yeah.
Well, there is an official title, and that's that of groundskeeper, so, Tom, I'd like to invite you to come to the front.
Yeah.
Yes. Mr. Crockerfield, that's it.
His lawn at home right now looks incredible. It looks incredible.
I've had more time to do stuff for this year.
So, if you remember, there was an article in July of 2017 about Tom's work, and he has cared for Crockerfield for 35 years. 35 years, which is pretty incredible. He's a lifelong resident of Fitchburg, and I love in the article, they put, you bounced around from factory to factory.
It was the 70s.
Yeah, it was like, okay, and then...
April 12th starting to close, and...
Right, so it's like, okay, where do I go next? And I think it was really meant to be, because you then got the job working in the field and discovered that he loved working outdoors and taking care of a field which is going to be 100 years old. He said that, as far as anybody knows, there have only been three people taking care of that field in its history, three, which is, so talk about longevity and the kind of work that goes on here in Fitchburg. He talked about the improvements that were made over the year, the press box. I read this, and I'll tell you why it was kind of humorous. So, the field over the years needed improvements. The press box had to be rebuilt, the clubhouse now has tile floors, the scoreboard's been replaced twice, the cinder block track has been resurfaced, the outdoor lights had to be reinstalled, and I thought, as I turn 65, this is like the description of when you get older. Things need to be replaced, they're not working as well, they're not as bright as they used to be.
Pete would remember the cinder track.
Oh, I remember the cinder track.
I remember that.
So, that now became the... So that now became the track which we have now. And I think this is the second time or third time that that's been resurfaced. So that all needs to be done. You've got your three sons, Jonathan, Nathan, and Ethan, who I think all played on Crocker Field.
They all ran track and played football.
All ran track and played, and played football. And he said that he guaranteed that he will be at many of our events. Now, the fact that this came together is pretty incredible, and that is that the year that you retired from working at Crocker Field is the same year that the artist for the Red Sox decided to make watercolors of Crocker Field. So who better to have a full set of the watercolors than you?
Right, yeah.
Here's the first one.
I kept the brochure away. I didn't decide which one survived.
We figured. We figured.
No, we couldn't.
So we had to get you, we had to get you one of these. This is the outside of the fieldhouse.
Oh, that's great.
The entrance, I'm sorry, the entrance. The fieldhouse, outside of the fieldhouse.
That was my first place.
Inside of the fieldhouse.
That's beautiful.
This, I'm still amazed at how he took something so complicated and made it look so beautiful. And then finally, the Crocker Field during the Leominster-Fitchburg game.
Beautiful.
So...
I appreciate you.
I'm gonna come over here and officially hand these to you for a photo op. And congratulations from all of us, and thank you very much.
Wait a minute.
Get in there.
Take the corners off of one picture. Yeah, so it's just a picture. You know, I was thinking when, when I first saw...
He tells you're tired.
Grab a picture.
This is birthday.
He's retiring.
Not your usual meeting, that Lisa.
Can we get a fourth one, Ray? Ray, Ray, come on up here, Ray.
Yeah.
On the other side, you hold a picture, too.
When I first saw these prints, I think it's the first time for a lot of people who ever saw inside of the clubhouse.
There's only one problem with this picture.
I know. Don't, I already know.
Oh, you're gonna... All right, so there we go. All right.
Well, you're gonna tell me after.
Okay. All right, thank you. So you're gonna tell us the problem with the picture.
Yeah, what's the problem with the picture? Here's a go in, what's the guy from Mummets today? He wrote the books on the... Mark Bedanza come down, and he did a lot of research at the clubhouse. And he says, "What's the favorite piece out of all the stuff in this room?" I says, "It's not there." He said, "What do you mean?" I says, "The trophy you win on Thanksgiving." "Wasn't there, and it's not there."
It's at the high school.
It's at the high school. Yeah, I realize that.
At the high school, that's crazy.
I've had people remind me that.
Really? I'm not the only one that noticed that. That's pretty good.
Congratulations.
Thanks a lot. I really appreciate that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you a lot, Ray.
Well deserved, and what a memory.
Oh, like I say, I got the brochure, I think it was last week, and I really couldn't make a decision. I said, "You know, for 100 bucks, I'm just gonna buy them all." Nice. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Tommy.
I knew all three of them. I knew Frank DiPietro, who was the first one.
Is that right?
And then Rupert, and then Tom. I had Tom's older brother as a sixth-grade student.
I've been around for a while, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Well, we're going in, well, you're continuing with the superintendent.
Other things. So you mentioned the gala. Thank you to the community and for everyone who came out. We had 250 people showed up. Those of you who were waiters, it was, people were so impressed with the young people who were our waiters. Jill Lucius said, "Never had to direct them. They just were working the whole time. They came in and out of the tables. You didn't even notice they were there." I thought Jimmy Tingle did a fabulous job of bridging generations of humor and getting us all to laugh and really enjoy ourselves. And right now, this is still a rough estimate, because we still have some expenses coming in. But I asked Patty this afternoon, we've made at least $15,000 profit.
Wow.
Profit. So that was wonderful. Thank you to Wachusett Brewery and Boulder Cafe, just for what they did. We made quite a bit on that. But I think the fact that the place was packed, we had 250 people there, the silent auction went really, really well. So thank you to everyone. And I think it was full attendance here, right? Every school committee member was there. So that was great. Really, really good. The other thing, in terms of new business, Gene mentioned the enrollment and how, you know, kind of a change of what we're looking to do. And I forget who asked for this, but somebody said, "Can we see a spreadsheet of, you know, how it's divided up?" So Eva put this together, because what we had said at the last time is that the way the demographics have shifted in the school district, it's pretty much across the whole city. So that when we're having to carve out sections for schools, it ends up that the dispersion of students is pretty equal all the way around. So I'm sharing this with you to just kind of confirm, you know, what we've already said. This does not, again, require your vote. There's not a policy that's being put into place, and there's no additional budget that needs to be presented. But I'm just kind of bringing it back for any other feedback or questions that you might have regarding moving to this more school-based, neighborhood-based approach to our enrollment process, with the understanding also that this would not, does not really affect folks that are in their schools already, that's grandfathered. It's really gonna be focused more on as kindergartners come in and we start to bring in new people into the district. So I don't know if there, as you've thought about this, if there are other questions that have come up, or questions about this information.
It really shows even distribution of students throughout the city.
And this is very up to date. This is March, I think. This information is put in on a regular basis, and this information is from March 1st. So it's very up-to-date information. So if there are no further concerns or suggestions, as we move forward with the new year and the enrollment of new students, we will be moving to the enrollment process that was described at the subcommittee meeting and that Eva presented here. Okay?
Yeah, very good. Thank you.
The next thing is, we, every year, you have to elect new members to the FLAC board. The FLAC is represented by superintendents. The CAPS, I think, can be either superintendents or school committee members. I will serve, and I asked if it had to be a specific name, and it does. So I will serve until October, and then you will have to do this again. I thought maybe you could just put in the superintendent, but the regulations call for an actual name. So if it's, if that's what you wish, I will serve as the representative for FLAC, and then you need to elect a new member among yourselves to serve on CAPS. And I don't know if you wanted to have that discussion right now. There is an action item on the agenda.
Can you briefly explain what the CAPS collaborative?
I've been doing it for eight years, and I'm chairman of the CAPS collaborative, and I'm Pittsburgh's representative to CAPS collaboratives. School committees need to appoint, the superintendent or a school committee member to the collaborative board. And what we have been doing is appointing the superintendent to the FLAC collaborative, and they have appointed me for the last eight years to the CAPS collaborative. And the collaboratives are made, the CAPS collaborative is made up of 11 cities and towns: Pittsburgh, Lemus de Gardner, Winchington, Narragansett, Athol, Templeton, La Quavon District. And there are 11 members on that board, of which I serve as chairman.
You wish to continue?
Oh, yes.
Yay.
Yeah. What I'd like to mention, for the last two years, we talk finances, the CAPS collaborative has come in with a 0% increase for tuition for the last two years.
It's a good thing. It helps us. Thank you.
Committee?
It's a good thing.
Yes.
I think people may not understand that the special, yeah, I mean, you...
There are, there are students in our, in the school system that go to a collaborative school. They need extra help. They do not function well in our public school system. And it's a number of, from behavioral to emotional issues that they have, and they're in special classrooms in a school that is much smaller. Some of the collaborative classrooms are located in, such as the Hubbardston Center School houses students with severe disabilities. And what happens with the collaborative, if you have a child that needs a lot of help, you might have to hire a teacher for $60,000 or $70,000 a year. That child may also need nursing care. So a nurse goes along with it. They may also need a paraprofessional. So that one child would be very expensive for the district. By putting them into the collaborative, there might be four or five students in the classroom with one teacher and a couple of aides and a nurse available for all four. So it works out very well for all of the communities. Any questions?
Do we have the vote on that now?
It's on the agenda.
Yeah.
We'll do that, then.
Thank you, Pete. I think you have to now nominate as part of the process to be confirmed in your vote later, filling in the name of whoever you choose.
Well, it says, actually, the action item is to approve the recommendations to nominate somebody.
Right.
Do I have a recommendation?
I'd like, I would like to recommend that Pete Stevens continue in this role.
All right. Nomination made and seconded to keep Mr. Stevens on the CAPS collaborative. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
All opposed? All right, we'll vote formally when we get into the...
All right, and then we have two field trips. These are familiar. The one to Washington, DC, which I've been following on Facebook and all of your postings as you get ready to go, and then the AMC White Mountain. So Jen, if you want to come up and talk a little bit about those two trips, especially for people at home who might not know, and then answer any questions that folks may have.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you for having me. We're getting geared up, getting ready to go for, to our Washington trip for our eighth graders. We have kids that are students coming from Memorial, McKay, in Long Island. We're forming up the numbers. It looks like we'll have probably about 120 students going with 13 staff. And I think our school resource officer is gonna join us this year, so we're still working out the logistics for that.
How's that compared to other years, Jen?
It's a small class, but for our school at Long Island, we have almost 45 kids, which is half the class.
Great.
Thankfully, we were able to raise quite a bit of money for scholarships and help families out through Sally's coin initiative at the different stores, and Pete, Mr. Stevens helped out with that. We were able to raise quite a bit of money. So we were able to help several families. You know, they were short maybe $100 or $200. We were able to help them out to make up the difference in the trip. So it's a really small class. I only have 98 graders right now. Next year, I foresee a really big trip, because we have 177th graders. So it all depends on the size of the class. And my team, my Washington, DC team, we've been doing it, the same group of teachers, I think, for the past eight trips, and they are just dynamite. They go above and beyond, getting extra funds. You know, they'll chase money down and go out to the community and ask different places for donations in behalf of the kids. So it's been, you know, they're just so great. You know, this is, the hard work is during the school year, and we actually get to Washington. It's, you know, it's all ready to go, and we just kind of fall into our routines and take care of the kids. So I'm pretty excited. We're gonna head down, leave here for Memorial on Sunday, June 3rd. We'd like everyone here by 6:00, 6:15, so we can get rolling at 6:30 in the morning. Head down there. The kids love the bus ride. It kind of cracks me up how much they love. They're on the bus. They're doing their thing. They have their phones. It's changed so much since I first started doing it, when Mr. Stevens did it with us a long time ago, you know, throwing the VHS tapes. Now the kids all have their phones, and they're watching all their own media, and it's just really interesting to see how it's evolved over the years.
How many years you been doing it?
This is my 25th trip.
Wow.
I know. It's just, it's crazy, but I love it, and I think it's...
It shows, though. That's great.
Yeah, yeah. So we're gonna meet, and we have a really great tour guide that comes with us every year, Tracy Hill. She's phenomenal, and we have a great team. And we're going with Wilson Bus Tours and the bus company, and they're dynamite. They take really good care of us. They stay together. The buses are immaculate, and they're just a good company to work with. We're heading over to Arlington National Cemetery and seeing Iwo Jima on the second day. We have tickets for the Holocaust Museum, which I'm really excited about. So those are hard to get. So the teachers have been doing a ton of work with the students, preparing them for this. It's really an emotional time for the kids to go through the whole Holocaust Museum. Sally, Mrs. Craig, came with us last year, so she'll get to see all that. You know, we have to really keep an eye on the kids after that, because it really impacts them. So we usually take off, and there's a great, it's called Honest Abe's. It's a souvenir shop. So we'll go to the Holocaust Museum, then we'll run over to Honest Abe's to go do a little souvenir shopping and kind of keep it light for the kids. So it's really fun. And then we have a dance that night, that Tuesday night, and it's, the kids get going halfway through, and then they don't want to leave. But, you know, they're so tired by that point, too. They're like, either they want to go home, or they go back to the hotel, or they want to stay and hang out with their friends. Then the next day, the last, the Tuesday, the last full day that we're there, we're gonna head up Embassy Road. They get a great tour of Embassy Road. We head up to the National Zoo, which is one of my favorites. The kids can kind of walk around with their roommates and get to see all the great exhibits there. Then we head down to the Capitol Building for the picture on the other side of the Capitol Building, on the back side. And then we hit the Smithsonian's, and I usually take the kids down to the carousel, and we'll go for a ride on the carousel. And it's one of my favorite things to do with my bus, to see the kids, you know. They still love carousels in eighth grade. So they all get their tickets and go on. And then the only, only thing I'm a little disappointed with is we can't go to the African-American Smithsonian, because you have to get tickets, and we have such a large group.
To which one?
The African-American Smithsonian, the new one.
Fabulous.
Yeah, so I'm hoping that down the road, once all the kind of newness wears off, we can get the kids in there. I think it'd be really powerful for them to see that. But they keep saying it's getting harder and harder to get tickets. So it's tough. Then we're heading to, to the, go to the Washington Nationals, which is a newer stadium. I love that stadium for the kids. It's real safe. It's just amazing. The kids get to watch a pro baseball game, and gonna see the Tampa Bay Rays, and get their hot dogs and hamburgers or nachos, whatever they want for dinner that night. And then the next morning, we're gonna try to tuck this in. The last day, we want to head to the Pentagon to go to the 9/11 monument, because we'll be in town. So we missed it the last couple of years, because we were in Baltimore the last night. But it's a great way to end the trip, kind of to show the kids what that's all about and kind of go back. Because some of these kids weren't even born when that happened. So we want to keep reminding and showing them what all that stuff's about. So it's a really, it's an incredible monument. If you haven't seen it, it's definitely worth the trip to go down and see that. But the kids have worked really hard fundraising. The parents, they've been very supportive, and had a good showing for my DC parent meeting. My staff's ready to roll. They're like, okay, let's get going. So the tour company's gonna be getting our final payment and the group lists, and we're just working out the rooming. Rooming situations kind of tend to get, the beginning of the year, they know who they're gonna room with, and things change over the school year. So there's a lot of, I want to room with this one, and we have to do some shuffling. So that's what we're working on right now. But it's coming together. I'm really thrilled.
You're still, you're still mixing the buses, right?
Oh, absolutely.
So that, we have kids from three middle schools, so we try to integrate them, so that they're all, hopefully all go to Pittsburgh High School next year, and so they get to know one another.
Yeah, it's really funny. My cousin Jane, her son, he had met his girlfriend for, and they were together all through high school. They met on the eighth-grade trip to Washington. I was like, wow, romance has happened in Washington.
Oh, yeah.
But that's when it starts. They start talking to each other, and, you know, they get to spend some time on the buses. So we try to mix it up. You know, okay, group from Long Island sits here, four kids from Memorial will sit here, and four kids from McKay will sit here, and then we spread out the chaperones. So it works out really well. And I'm really happy. Arthur Baxter, our clinician's coming along, too. So he's really helpful and kind of that homesickness, kids get homesick.
Mr. Baxter, last year?
It's his last year, yes. I don't know what I'm gonna do next year.
Been a wonderful teacher in the system. He's been a wonderful teacher in the system.
Yeah, he's taken really good care of us down in Washington, and, you know, really brought the experience for special needs students that wouldn't have been able to go, that, you know, he's really made it accessible for the kids, and really opened my eyes to how to, you know, take care of special situations on the road, and it's worked out great. So, yeah, he's been doing it with me about eight years now, so he's got some big shoes to fill whoever comes in next. But I'm, I'm excited that the school resource officer, Officer Figueroa, might be joining us, so I think it'll be good for him to get to know the kids in that non-academic setting, and, you know, they'll get to see him as one of the, one of the helpers in our community. I'm pretty happy about that. Any questions about DC?
I just, one comment. One of your students, I, I don't know his name, but three different times when you were selling candy bars, first time I met him was on election day, outside the polls. He showed up at Slattery's Race, and I forget the third place, but I, I think my wife and I were together when we saw him for the third time, and we said, you are a very smart sales marketing person. He was at the right place, all the events, and I'm sure he's, we probably bought and ate way too many chocolate bars, but it was for a good cost, so I was very impressed.
Yeah. And that's been a great fundraiser for our families, too, because a lot of the moms and dads will take the candy bars to work, so they come and get it after school and take it home, so it works out really well.
Yeah, I, I just have a comment because I, I had the joy of being a chaperone last year when there was a space, and it is a very deep and rich academic experience, and it is enchanting and so involving for all of these kids. And the Holocaust Museum did have the greatest effect. I saw kids, you know, really looking at the objects and artifacts, but also really reading the, the notes and putting it together with what they'd learned in the classroom, and I could really tell that this was a life-changing event, that seeing all of the different, you know, really shocking, you know, because the museum, you start at the top and you work your way down, and the, the top starts with basic bigotry and prejudice, and then it becomes much more implemented on a state level as you descend. And they sort of, you go deeper into the, into the catastrophe as you descend, and the kids were, you know, they walked really slowly, not to miss a bit of it. And so the enrichment aspect of this is just without any parallel, as well as seeing all the monuments. I, I, I was really thrilled to be part of it, and the, the kids really, it, it sticks with them, because I talked to a bunch of kids in the fall to get, you know, in lines for the donation letter requests, and I had, every child said something different, pretty much, when I just said, well, was there a museum, or was there, was, was there a site? And I got all these different responses, so well, well done, and thank you for all you do, and that everyone does to make this happen.
It's a great trip.
Pittsburgh students, the, when the Holocaust Museum opened the very first day, Pittsburgh, we were there the very, the second day it was open.
Oh, really?
The second day, yeah. It's really, you go in, when you go in, you go in, you go in an elevator, and you go up to the top, and then you get off the elevator, and that's, you look, you're maybe this far away, and you see this big mural on the wall, and you don't know what it is till you focus, but it's all stacked up with people.
Yeah. It's pretty powerful stuff, yeah. So it's, it's one thing that I'm really glad that the tour company helps us get the tickets. In the past, I've had to make the reservations, and they cut us out of it, which is nice, so I'm very lucky.
Have you ever, have you gotten into Congress at all, Senate or House of Rep?
Because of the nine eleven, they changed the whole Capitol Building Tour Company, the whole process around, and you have to get tickets, you have to go through their kind of show, you can't really get up into like the dome area like we used to. That's one of the big changes I've noticed about going to Washington with this many kids. Having this many kids, really, it's great for the kids, but you can't get into all the stuff really quickly, because you're, you're taking around four, three or four buses at a time. But the, I would recommend the Capitol Tour for anyone going down, it's worth it, but if we could get, you know, the tour guides in there, because we could do a thirty-five minute, forty-minute walk around the inside of the Capitol. In the past, we just can't do that anymore. It's all really, it's tight security.
When, I went a few years ago with Jennifer, when we were at the White House, and we, everything stopped, and we were stopped near the White House, we couldn't do anything, and here comes this big limousine, and the lights flashing, and they're going into the White House, and these two little girls are waving to us, who's President Obama's two daughters, and everything, everything was stopped, they were coming home from school. Yeah.
The kids are going to kick out of that stuff.
It was really something.
Yeah.
Yeah, you could see them, they were waving from...
Any other questions for DC?
I mean, I still haven't forgotten my DC trip. That was something that I was, I can't forget, especially the Holocaust Museum, as Sally said. Me personally, that was like one of my favorite things to learn about, like, I loved how, like, I don't know, it's just learning about it was so interesting. I remember in my eighth grade class, for preparation, our English teacher made us do like a, an essay on one of the concentration camps. She assigned like certain concentration camps to students, and we did like a research paper, and definitely that helped for the DC trip. And along with what Ms. Fisher said, the buses were well distributed with all three schools. I felt like I had a couple students that I knew from every school on my bus, which also made the connection better, so when I went into high school, I saw a couple familiar faces, like, oh, you know, I saw you on this DC trip, we sat next to each other at, you know, the Red Sox game, how's it going? So that was definitely more comforting, going into high school with a couple familiar faces from other schools, and overall, the trip goes really well. It was really fun. I still, I had a great time, I remember.
I don't know if they've done it, but we held a dance for all eighth grade students. We held it here at Memorial, so all the kids could get together and meet one another before they went on the trip.
It's with all the schedules and everything going on, it's just crazy to try to fit everything in, and even getting the parents to come to the, the last meeting about what to bring and that kind of stuff. It was like, oh, we got soccer games, we got this, we have that. I'm like, oh, how do we fit it all in? So, yeah, it's tough to try to, to get everybody together, but it's something Mr. Walker and Mr. Pack and I talk about.
Yep.
So the other trip that we have going for Long Joe is our AMC trip. We're taking our sixth graders up to the White Mountains. I believe she has forty kids going. Again, really working hard, making sure the kids get up there. It's a hundred and thirty dollars a student. That's for the four days, which is really good. They get a guided tour of the White Mountains. Mr. Chalfo is going to be going up as the administrator. I'm second up if he doesn't get to go, so I'll go to AMC, and then I'll go to Washington the following week. I have a new chaperone, Beth Shachtel is taking over for Becky Colo, because she's on maternity leave right now, and she's really doing a dynamite job. She's never run a trip, so I've been kind of walking her through the whole process. So she's pretty excited there. Going to be taking a school bus up, and they'll be, you know, going up and staying in the Joe Dodge Lodge, which is warm, and they'll have guides through the AMC, which will take them out on different little hikes. They're actually going to go up to the huts up in Tuckerman's Ravine, so the kids will actually get to see snow in May. Yeah, so it'll be really good for them to kind of go out and see nature, look at ecosystems. I like the science part of it. They'll be talking a lot about geology and the geology, glaciation of the White Mountains, and how things have changed over the years, really looking at that kind of stuff. And spending time outdoors, our students don't spend enough time outside and being outside. So for some of our kids, it's the first time kind of going out and doing that, and just kind of going out in the woods and checking stuff out, and looking under rocks, and stomping around in brooks and streams, so I think it'll be a great experience for all of them, and got quite a few special needs students going this year, too, so I'm pretty happy about that.
I would you want to see snow in May? I don't want to see snow in December.
It's one of the things the kids can't get over, the fact that elevation for them is really...
Is that what it is?
Yeah, like they...
I'm kidding.
I used to ski it when I was a kid, so...
Yeah, yeah, me, too.
So, yeah, we're, we're pretty excited, and again, we have a really great staff going. A lot of the sixth grade teachers are going with Mr. Chalfo, and last year, we had a couple homesick kids that he had to drive home, and they felt so bad for him, they, they made him stop at Dunkin' Donuts to get coffee. They wanted to buy him a coffee on the way home, because he was dropping him off. He drove from...
Had to go home?
Yeah, well, the kids are really homesick.
Really?
Oh, yeah, yeah, because for some of them, this is the first time ever, leaving home for that many days, and there's no cell service up there.
Oh, so you can't call home, or...
You need a call, yeah, you know, I think there's one payphone up there, even, I don't even think it works.
Yeah.
You're eleven years old, and you're first time away from home, you know? And you're rooming with four other people.
That's cute.
Yeah, so they do, Mr. Chappell is a great job with them.
Any questions? All right, all set?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
No problem.
Twenty-five more years.
Eight, eight.
But, but who's counting, right?
I'm going to go next year, I think.
You want to go? You're more than welcome. Mr. Stevens, we'd love to have you.
So one of the items you're going to be voting on is every year, the school district has to declare yourselves a school choice district. You can do it as a district, you can do it with restrictions on particular grades, but as we have in the past, starting on July 1, the Pittsburgh Public Schools, I'm recommending that the Pittsburgh Public Schools are open to school choice in all grades, and there's an action item on the, on the agenda for that. Any questions about school choice? Okay, and Bob's going to give you just a preliminary budget update.
Hey, in your packages that you received the end of last week, I thought I'd just give you a high-level overview of where we're at. Originally, the governor's budget was announced at the end of January, almost a three million dollar increase in net school spending based on increases in total enrollment in subgroups to English language learners and economically disadvantaged. Beginning of March, our direct spend budget, which the school committee votes on, recommended a one point six million dollar increase, a little over that, from FY18 levels. But in the middle of last month, the city informed us that due to increases in health insurance, that that would have to be adjusted downward by four hundred fifty thousand. So the net increase in our direct spending budget is a little over one point two million. We're in the midst of looking at what actions may be necessary to take. One thing that we are recommending and is included in the budget is the addition of six new teachers at different schools, one at Memorial, four at Long Joe, and one at Crocker, to meet each school's grade level bulges in enrollment. Again, right now, we're working on balancing the budget, and over the next couple of weeks, we will be doing that, and then reporting back to you with some more information.
Questions?
If I could just add one comment to something that came out of the Student Support Subcommittee about the extended learning time. If that grant were ever to end for any reason, the impact would be a hundred seventy thousand dollar increase in busing costs, and Long Joe and Rheingold would have to adjust their start and dismissal times to minimize the overall impact to the district, but the bottom line is, there would be a hundred seventy thousand dollar increase in transportation.
I think it's important that people understand that it's not like savings we would get from the change in their hours, because that's all paid through by a grant. So we're only losing money.
Correct, and actually, that's a ineligible net school spending expense, the busing, so it doesn't benefit anybody.
Doesn't count. And losing money and losing valuable academic time.
This is becoming a budget buster all over the country. There was a, an expose in the New York Times recently about, and when you think about, there aren't even enough busing, there aren't companies that are in, that are getting into this business because of the challenges. The union issues, the, the hardware, the buses themselves, the upkeep, the maintenance, the costs are going through the roof, and of course, that's passed on to the school district. So it's really almost at a crisis stage. You can't, you can't really bargain with any, there aren't, you know, you don't have a laundry list of companies that bus.
And in most, most school districts across Commonwealth, there's one bidder.
That's right, usually it's one bidder.
One yellow bus bidder.
And that's, yeah, so...
What I read in the paper the other day, I don't know, Bob, if you have any more information, but seat belts in buses, if that passes, I don't know, we're busing...
That's been kicked around for years, hasn't it?
Yeah, yeah.
There are some states that mandated.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it's, it's kind of intuitive that they don't have them, but, I mean, I, right? I mean, you'd think it would be automatic, right, but apparently not.
So could I just say, is, in your process right now, is this all just meeting with building principles? You've taken recommendations about what possible cuts could be enacted, or...
Well, because of the, the recent change in the funding from the city, we're looking at the details now to see how we can bring the balance, the budget into balance.
Right.
Prior to that, we weren't looking at cuts, or if there were maybe some tweaks, so we, we might have to look at some individual line items, and, but we haven't yet met to have that conversation, but we'll be meeting Wednesday to bring that issue up with the principals.
So who is the we? Who will be meeting, the principals?
Add co-principals.
Yeah, okay.
All the departments, so the directors and the principals and cabinet are meeting Wednesday at three o'clock.
All right, and when will we know about ILT, the Long Joe Extended Learning?
That grant is usually released in early June, and Craig writes it, usually it's due by July 1st.
But will we know sooner if there's a staff decision about...
Well, that's really not a staff decision, it's really up to, I mean, there isn't a vote or anything like that. So I know Craig had communicated with his staff to say, here we are, there's, there are significant implications all around, and so that's, but it's, it's not, there isn't a vote. In the previous, many years ago, there was an annual vote. That no longer exists in the MOU.
So, so we could find out, obviously, they must make the, grant the awards before the school year begins, yes?
Correct.
So it could be that we don't even know yet what the amount is that...
It's annually, the grant in the past, it's been between twelve hundred, twelve hundred and fifty, or thirteen hundred dollars a student, and it's based on the prior year's October 1 student enrollment. So even though next year, for example, their eighth grade has a hundred students in it, or ninety-seven, but this current seventh grade has a hundred and seventy students, eighty student difference, that eighty students won't be included because it's based on last October 1, two thousand seventeen enrollment numbers. So it's always, the funding is always a year behind the current enrollment. So then Craig's issue, it takes between thirty to forty hours to write the grant. It's managing how many people, at what amount, work the extra hours, and how many kids, and what kinds of programming, whether or not you can contract with outside folks. So we would know shortly after, I mean, whether or not we're going to write the grant shortly after the grant is released, the RFP is released in early June.
Okay. Okay, and then you have some grants on, there's a sheet in your packet, Twenty-First Century Grant, these are the grants that we're submitting. Twenty-First Century Grant for ninety thousand five hundred and eighty-four dollars, a McKinney Vento Grant for thirty thousand dollars.
That should be twenty thousand, Paul, I've just mentioned to you.
Yeah, we just met on the McKinney Vento, they've changed how the McKinney Vento, that's the program to support students who experience homelessness, and it's been reduced to twenty thousand for the next year.
So that's okay, because it's, this is submitting as opposed to receiving, so change that, and then we will change it when we come back for the receiving. Hurricane Relief, the hundred and seventy-five thousand one hundred and fifty-five, that's one of two payments, there'll be another one coming later on in the year, and most of that is going to be going to second language staff, ELL, excuse me, ELL staff. E-Rate, a hundred and forty-six thousand seven hundred and fifty-seven, for subsidy for telecom services. Summer food service for twelve thousand eight, nine hundred and eighty-nine dollars. The power options grant, thank you, Mr. Stevens, for pointing that one out, and thank you, Bob, for chasing it down. That's ten thousand dollars, we wouldn't have had otherwise, and it provides assistance to improve our heating system. And then the Unitil Grant for five thousand five hundred dollars, which will go towards funding the steam trap repair at Long Joe. Any questions about the grants being submitted or received?
Seeing none.
The only thing I would ask on, on the, on the Washington DC trip, it only specifically says Long Joe Middle School eighth grade students, so I think we should make sure that we've written in Memorial and McKay, or just our eighth grade students.
Make a motion...
So I'd make a motion that we strike Long Joe and just say the middle school eighth grade students.
Yep.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Okay, that's it with my report. Thank you for catching that.
Superintendent, you want, what's the, what's the wish of the, one of the ones at one at a time? All right, action item 18-992, point Superintendent Raven, other service representative, the Flag Board of Directors for 2018-2019. Motion made second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, is unanimous. 18-993, approve the school committee's recommendation to nominate Mr. Peter Stevens, the service school committee representative, the CAPS Collaborative for 2018-2019.
So move.
Second. Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, is unanimous. What you wish to Bundaleese, 18994, up through and including 18-10, 1,000. Make a motion.
Make a motion.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, is unanimous. No need for executive session.
Motion for adjournment, Mr. Mayor.
Motion made, motion made seconded for adjournment, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. We are adjourned.